Hello. Welcome to the City Council meeting for the meeting of September 8, 2014. Please rise to salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a two-republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Senate, the House, and the閣下 Madam Clerk. The members, Counselor Rigo.
Here.
Here, Counselor Gino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Haas.
Here.
Here, Counselor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Counselor Patch.
Here.
Here, Counselor Penta.
Here.
Here, Counselor Powers.
Here.
Here, Counselor Reardon.
Here.
Here, Counselors Zambudo is absent, and Counsel President Guanasso.
Here.
Here, a quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the meeting held on August 25, 2014.
All in favor, I'll poll. So are you.
Calendar item number one, communication from Joe Robertson relative to the Michelob Half Marathon to be held on Sunday, September 14.
Please come to the podium. Whereas we have met two times on this particular issue, and if there aren't any questions from the members of the council, well, seeing that Counselor Novosowski has a question, I'm going to limit debate on this because we've really discussed this pretty much, and it's ready to run the race, okay? Counselor Novosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Vice President. I just want to clarify everything from last week, and I don't know if people know what's been going on over the last, since two weeks ago. But before I even start anything, I want to thank Captain Guido for stepping in and stepping up and squaring things away, because I know we weren't very happy the last time we met. And since then, Captain Guido took it upon himself to reach out to the state police and work on it, and everything that was told us by Joe a month ago is now coming true and to fruition. And everybody is ecstatic. We just hope it stays that way for the next week. But we're all very happy about it, and I know, you know, there were a lot of heated moments a couple of weeks ago, but, you know, I was getting the phone calls like you wouldn't believe. And when I told the people that everything has been squared away, and they're going to have easy in and out, everybody's happy and very ecstatic about it, and looking forward to it, and that we have a peaceful day and no rain. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Any other counselors? Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess if this will is a way, you know, we can get things done in the benefit of the residents of this city. And I'm very happy that the chief and Captain Guido put their minds to work and came up with a solution that will benefit not only people in the other area of the city, but particularly on Revere Beach Boulevard, because just a whole people hostage for three hours in their homes, that to my way of thinking is not something that works for the benefit of the residents down there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Certainly, all of us are reflective, even if there aren't people that live and reside on the Revere Beach Boulevard, there are people within our community who frequent the beach at that particular time. So we were very mindful of their concerns that we have shared over the last couple of years. So to me, we've worked out something that's doable for everybody. Congratulations to both of you. Have a great, safe race, and the citizens of Revere will be applauding you as they come to the finish line. And certainly, working with you two gentlemen is a pleasure, both of you. You come to the podium with the good of the people in mind, and it's a good thing to happen in this council chamber.
Thank you very much, Counselor. If I may, I don't want to take up any more of your time than necessary. Let's talk.
Okay. I just want to say, when I was here, you know, a week or two ago, I was acting upon what I knew at the time. It was painful, okay, for me to hear your comments, okay, but I understood them, okay? After 30 years in this business, okay, I do understand, and we try as best we can, as I mentioned, to ease, okay, you know, the, what goes on with the community, okay? And we want to be, you know, as good a neighbor as we possibly can, okay? So I did talk with the chief and with Captain Guido, and as you mentioned, you know, he took it upon himself to get back to the state police and get it reversed for us, if you will. So all that Joe had mentioned in his first meeting about what we were hoping to, you know, to accomplish, okay, did come to fruition. To your point, Counselor, nothing will change this week, all right? We did have our final all-police safety meeting this afternoon, and all the entities understand exactly what we're doing, and our traffic safety company was there, and we're going to cone it off properly so that the residents do have that egress lanes that we had talked about. And I thank you all very much. We look forward to, you know, a good race, and thank you to the community. The mayor did respond, you know, to Joe's request about coming to the start line and being our official starter, so we have your support and the mayor's support, and we're much appreciative. Thank you.
Mr. President, could I just ask a question?
Counselor Penta.
Thank you. Basically, I know everything is done on basis of state roads, and they have jurisdiction over the Revere Police, but the Revere Police work in conjunction with them on certain roads that are cut off. And I know you learn from your mistakes, and this is the second or third, third one you have, and the first one, you know, there was some things that, you know, if people call me, because, I mean, at first, they had the Winter Police down in Winthrop, they had Revere Police, they had State Police, and they were getting mixed messages that this road would be open at a certain time, this one wouldn't. Where is the main headquarters they can call to get, if something does go awry, or something does go, where would be the best to call? Our Revere Police or State Police?
Counselor, we'll have representatives from State Police, Revere Police, where will be Captain Guido, he'll be incident commander on our side. Boston Police will be in attendance in the Bennington Street area, so if you have any concerns, they'll be through Captain Guido.
All right, because the only reason, this is two years ago, not last year, but people going to Winthrop, they're sending them back to Revere down the wrong way, and it was just, I mean, communication between the Winter Police and State Police actually was my biggest problem. And the Revere Police, when I called, said, "Look, we can't overrule the State Police," which I understand that and their jurisdiction, but you answered my question, chief, and thank you, and thank you for working this thing out.
Absolutely, thank you.
But that first year, Counselor, you know, we were not involved with the race, okay? It was another management company, which was with all the problems that, you know, ensued, which is why they got in touch with us, and we made that course change, okay? Taking it out of that turnaround, you know, towards Winthrop and also, of course, the loop.
That was a nightmare. I mean, the calls I got on that, it was just people just door locked, whichever way they went.
As soon as I saw it, I knew it was a nightmare, and we changed it.
Thank you.
Counselor Reardon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I may have been a little out of the loop, sir, but I'm wondering, Counselor Janino and I had some concerns about the access to the MBTA garage. And by the way, as soon as I found out that Captain Guido was involved in this, I knew it would resolve all the other issues. But let me ask you about the access to the garage. Is that, has that been addressed at all?
Yes, it has. So we do have an arrangement set up with the MBTA, the administrators at the garage, in which if there are any residents that would like to park there overnight, leave their car there, and then, you know, they can sort of get out of the area via the garage. We will have chaser tickets available at Suffolk Downs over the course of the weekend, so they can come by Saturday, and we have an information table, and we'll have a member of our staff that will have those tickets. So anyone that wants to park there will cover the costs of their parking there, they just have to pick up one of the chaser tickets.
Okay, you're going to make this clear to anybody who needs to use that, wants to use that beach, that they can have a ticket to park there.
Exactly right, yep.
Very good. Well, everybody should know that, if you want to go to Revere Beach, and what's the date again?
September 14.
September 14. This coming, September 14.
Exactly.
This coming weekend, on that particular day, they can get a ticket to Suffolk Downs to park in that garage, even though they can't park on the beach, and that's what the garage is for, access to that beach, among other things. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Reardon.
Just one last word about our community outreach. You'll start to see some variable message boards that we started to put up today, and they'll be completed tomorrow. Thursday, we'll be putting out no parking signs, you know, on the, obviously, the opposite sides of the roads from what our agreement is. And we are also working with DCR, okay, for car flyers, okay, on those parked areas, all right, starting Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, so that we, you know, certainly get enough attention, you know, to the residents, you know, of the upcoming no parking policy on Sunday.
Certainly sounds like you now have all your ducks in a row. Any other counselors? Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Novoselsky.
Mr. President, thank you. I know before you came in, I did speak, but now, you just brought up one thing. Now, the, those MBTA passes are only for people on the beach and Ocean Avenue? Do they have to show proof that they have to live there?
We don't necessarily have any sort of system, you know, it's not like we're checking addresses, but I would say that I expect that, you know, in the interest of this effort, we want to accommodate anybody and everybody that needs, or that feels that they need this arrangement.
Okay, good. And that's one question. Now, the issue about towing vehicles, I know we talked about that before, about how the people still, if they get towed, are they still going to have to go to Lynn to pick up their vehicles? Because I know we talked about possibly moving them to the North Lot and guarding them there.
We're going to do everything we can not to tow any vehicles.
Yeah.
They're posting signs. The only place there's going to be no parking is on the water side of the Boulevard.
Right.
On the water side of Ocean Ave. Everywhere else, the cars can stay under the.
Understood that, but just in case somebody got towed.
Today, I asked Sergeant Crosby at roll call that morning to have the troopers ask him permission to tow any cars. So the goal is to tow zero cars.
Zero, and I understand that, but you know that potentially it could happen, so.
If the state tows them, yes.
They go to Lynn. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one question. Have the residents on the Boulevard and the condominiums and the other single-family homes down there, from Carey Circle up to Revere Street, been notified of this plan and been informed that they will be able to leave their homes whenever they want during that period?
So, excuse me, yeah, we've gone door to door on both Ocean Ave and Revere Beach Boulevard, just, you know, providing notice that the race is happening. And the day that we start to post the no parking signs on the building side of both streets, we'll do the same to, you know, conduct some outreach and knock on doors and make sure that people know, and speak with all the building managers, you know, we have the list of all the.
Excuse me, you say on the building side?
So on Revere Beach Boulevard.
That would be on the East Street side, there's no parking, correct? On the West Street side, parking would be allowed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Any other counselors? I guess that concludes this informational session.
Calendar item number two, reconsideration filed by Counselor Zambudo relative to free cash appropriation, the amount of $50,000 for City Hall renovations architect.
On the roll.
Shall the City Council reconsider Council Order Number 14-119? Counselor Rigo.
No.
No, Counselor Janino.
No.
No, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas. No, Counselor Morabito. No, Counselor Novoselsky. Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
No.
No, Counselor Reardon.
No.
No, and Counsel President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the motion to reconsider fails. Calendar item number three, reconsideration filed by Counselor Zambudo relative to the National Grid petition for a conduit installation on Ward Street. Shall the City Council reconsider Council Order Number 14-193? Counselor Rigo.
No.
No, Counselor Janino.
No.
No, Counselor Guanasso.
No.
No, Counselor Haas. No, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky. Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Reardon. No, Counsel President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the motion is reconsidered.
I think I've seen the first time in my history in this council that something wasn't reconsidered. Wouldn't have meant that the item was passed, it would have meant that we would reconsider it, and then we could have shot it down. However, protocol changes up here like the wind. Anyhow, now this is on, this is on the table to have, give permission to National Grid to put up the electricity for a permit that we've issued, a special permit. Now, I don't know if I need to say that what fools we will look like in court when we tell the judge that we gave a special permit, but we won't allow the power to go to that permit. We'll do real well in that lawsuit, I can assure you.
Mr. President.
So that's the reason I filed for reconsideration, because I think it was unprecedented to try to hold up power to a building we approved.
Mr. President.
Counselor Guanasso.
Mr. President, I don't think the judge would think it was foolish based on the fact that the people of the area don't want it, you know, and through the oversight and neglect of not paying attention to people in the area, it was voted through. It doesn't mean it was right that it was voted through, and I think in a conscious effort a couple of weeks ago, this council probably thought that way also, that it wasn't what the people really wanted. So if this, if National Grid had to go before the courts, okay, it still delays the project, which is unwanted in the neighborhood, and at least it serves a purpose that each and every one of us who represent that area also with the wishes of the people, and there wasn't one single resident in that area that was for this project, not one. I go by Ward Street on a daily basis. Now, with the good fortune of Market Baskin coming yards away, you won't be able to move down there. You'll need a movable van to just get through the area. With all this overdevelopment that's going to occur at this site, this is going to add insult to injury. I think the people down there have a vested interest in their homes already. We should protect them. We shouldn't protect this outside investor who wants to build upon this property and add insult to injury. There's enough development down there already. There's a few other things he could do with this property and make everybody happy. I just can't for the life of me think that we're doing a wrong thing by trying to delay or stop this project, and I live with my conscience, Mr. President, and I think that the judge, if you make mention of, I think he would say, "Good for the people in the area. They don't want it, and they're doing everything in their power to stop it." Thank you.
Counselor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick, short history of this. When the first vote came up for this bill, and I was not on the council, the council then seemed fit to give this developer, whoever he is, a permit to build X amount of units, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. I happened to become in the council, the administration called the developer and asked him to downsize his project. From three bedrooms to two, and X amount of units, locked it down, knocked it down a couple of levels. The petitioner came up here, and not often do they do. They actually worked with the city to downsize the project. Now, he could have not came up here, he could have took that vote when he first called it and went and built those extra units. I respected the developers coming up here, working administration downsizing, and I did vote, as this council majority voted, to downsize the units given them. This is a formality, and I can respect the council for doing it. He wants to tie it up and go longer, make it longer, he's going to get it through in the state. There's no question in my mind, it's not going to go in front of some judge. It's going in front of some state, and he'll get it, and, you know, hopefully the market is still the same now than it is when we postponed it. So with a clear conscience, I will vote for it. Reconsideration, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Penta. Counselor Reardon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also was not on the City Council when this original permit was granted. I would not have voted for it then, for reasons that I've stated far too many times, about the ridiculous density that we promote in this city, the traffic, and not to mention the schools. And I don't know what the judge is going to say, or what any administrative body might say down the road, but I can tell you what the city people, the city of Revere are going to say when they have to throw in another $40 million to build another school. They're not going to say anything very nice. I voted against the change in the special permit because it was self-serving. There's no question in my mind that no fool in his right mind would voluntarily come to downsize a project unless he had an ulterior motive. They couldn't sell that project the way it was, they needed our permission to do it, and we caved in and did it. I didn't, we did, as a body, however. And I will do anything that I can to prevent that 138 or whatever number of units from being built on that site and causing the pain, suffering, heartache, and expense that it's going to cause the city of Revere. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Let me just say that I misspoke. I said a judge, "These people can go tomorrow before the utility board at the state, this permit will be issued, they will laugh at us." I know that we're trying to delay this because we're not happy with it. We voted for BJ's. We put BJ's there, we swallowed the apartment complex. Lucky it's downsized because we were stuck with the bigger one. So, I mean, let's try to do things professionally up here. Roll call.
Shall the City Council approve the petition of National Grid to install a conduit on Ward Street? Counselor Rigo.
No.
No, Counselor Gino.
No.
No, Counselor Guanasso.
No.
No, Counselor Haas. No, Counselor Morabito.
No.
No, Counselor Novoselsky. Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
No.
No, Counselor Reardon.
No.
No, and Counsel President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the petition fails. Calendar item number four, report of the zoning subcommittee.
Chairman Redd.
Thank you, Mr. President. Afternoon, at 5:00 PM, the zoning subcommittee met in these chambers to consider three separate items. The first item was C-14-08, a petition by Robert Corcoran Barbering LLC at 9 Whitney Road, Boxford, Mass., for request to construct six townhouses within the RB district at 75 Lamson Street in Revere. This matter was held in the subcommittee, Mr. President, because we have yet to receive any advisory from the site plan review, and also at the request of Ward Six Counselor Patch, trying to work out some other issues with the property. So that is not ready for a vote at this time. Item C-14-09 is the next item on the agenda, and that's petition from RLS Realty Investment LLC of 301 Newbury Street in Danvers, requesting a conversion of a non-conforming commercial use and structure into a two-family residence at Lot 7 at 97 to 99 Centennial Avenue in Revere. A representative of the petitioner did appear today to discuss the conversion of that structure. It was considered by the subcommittee, and at the end of the hearing, the subcommittee voted unanimously to report it out favorably to the full City Council that is ready for a vote this evening.
On the recommendation of the zoning subcommittee chairman.
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested by the petitioner for 97-99 Centennial Avenue? Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas. Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Reardon.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been approved.
Mr. President.
Chairman Redd.
Lastly, on the, before the zoning subcommittee this afternoon, was item C-14-10. This is a petition from Franklin Avenue Investment LLC, 111 Everett Avenue, Chelsea, Massachusetts, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to convert a non-conforming structure in use from an eight-unit residential structure to a 10-unit residential structure on Lot 69 at 34 Franklin Avenue, Revere, Massachusetts. The subcommittee considered this after a presentation by the petitioner, in which I think of note is the fact that it was determined that this was prior non-conforming use was, among other things, a 15 residential unit that was constantly plagued by zoning, not by zoning, I'm sorry, by inspectional service requests for remediation and from the former owner, and it was a constant issue. The petitioner also has agreed to service a lot across the street owned by the city and set it up for full resident parking, not just for the use of this particular residents. And again, once again, it was supported by the Ward Council as well. As a result, this was reported out favorably from the full zoning subcommittee and is ready for a vote this evening.
Mr. Chairman. Counselor Novoselsky.
Thank you. Just one note, I don't know if there's any site plan review recommendations with it, but I know there were some agreements that were made on the additional lot across the street, so I just want to make sure that they put in their plantings and.
Do you want to make that as a condition, Counselor?
Yes, please. Yeah, they agreed to it. No, on the additional parking lot across the street, 30 Highland, yes.
Thank you.
On the special permit as amended.
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested by the petitioner for 34 Franklin Ave., subject to the condition that 30 Highland Street will be maintained as a parking lot and have appropriate landscaping? Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Reardon.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted, subject to the conditions set forth by Counselor Calendar item number five, communication from Bob Upton relative to the employer's support of the Guard and Reserve statement.
Mr. Upton, or Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Counsel members, thank you very much for this opportunity to appear before you this evening. This evening, I am here in my volunteer capacity as the Military Outreach Director for the Employer Support of the Guard and the Reserve. That's the Massachusetts State Committee of the Guard and Reserve. The Employer Support and the Guard and Reserve, for those who may not be familiar, is the Department of Defense Agency. I myself am a veteran, and I have 28 years of service, and I am a military retiree. I know that the city of Revere does support the Guard and the Reserve, because I know that there are employers, employees, I should say, serving in the Guard and Reserve in the city of Revere. However, I would like to read the opening paragraph, the letter, Mr. President, that I sent to you for the benefit of the other council members, so they're aware of what I'm suggesting and what I hope can in fact happen.
You could read the whole letter if you want.
I'll take, if you don't mind, I will try to take and read the part that I think is pertinent, and I didn't want to take too much of your time, but thank you very much. "The mission of the Employer Support and the Guard and Reserve is to gain and maintain support from all public and private employers for the men and women of the National Guard and Reserve, which today is so vital to our nation's military readiness. The Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve Statement of Support serves to foster and enhance the strategic partnership with employers." My suggestion this evening is that each of these city counselors would sign a statement of support, as well as the school committee, the mayor. enhance the strategic partnership with employers. My suggestion this evening is that each of these city councilors would sign a statement of support, as well as the school committee, the mayor, department heads, fire, and police chief, at a ceremony sometime in the coming months to be coordinated with a collaboration between myself and the city clerk and the council and the mayor's office, if that was in fact done." That is essentially what my request is and why I'm here this evening, and I would hope that the City Council will certainly support that, and we can move forward to make plans for that event to happen in the council chambers.
Well, I thank you very much for your presentation, and I thank you for your service, and thank you for your volunteer service, along with all the other stuff you do. I don't know where you find the time, but we're grateful.
Well, thank you very, very much. In fact, this is my first appearance in front of the City Council for something like this, and I appreciate this opportunity. Thank you again.
Thank you. Counselor Novoselfsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I just want to reemphasize everything Bob said. You know, Bob and I served in National Guard for over almost 30 years, so probably 60 years between the two of us. And this Employer Support for the Guard and Reserve is so important to show how, even the city of Revere, and we support our military personnel by letting them go, and we were paying them many, for time away, even while they were away, we still paid them. I know we had to make some corrections on that several years ago, but it's important that your employers, and I say everybody's employers, that have military personnel in there, if they are in favor of these people serving and they support them, they deserve that certificate of award to show their support for our military. And I know the city of Revere has, and I would expect that, you know, Bob's going to have one for us that night when he has that list of employers. So, very important, and, you know, I would support this 1,000 percent, and I know you work hard for the Guard and Reserve itself. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Novoselfsky. Anyone else? Okay, so you're going to notify us when you're going to do this presentation, and we'll go from there. Thank you very much for your time.
Calendar item number six, motion presented by Counselor Powers that the mayor request the school department to clean up any debris and wood chips from the recent tornado on the school department parking lot adjacent to Eastern Avenue.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to commend the mayor and the DPW for the swift action that they took within not only hours, minutes, after the tornado hit the city of Revere. There were crews out there working to clean up Broadway, looking at things that needed to be repaired, and we're still doing that, but it was put on a fast track. And I want to compliment, again, the mayor and the DPW for that efficient and effective service that they provided to the residents. However, with that said, I've received calls during the past several weeks, as recently as today, with regard to conditions down at the parking lot high school. I had occasion to get on there the other day myself. I put a motion in last week with regard to the fence on True Street, Eastern Avenue, McClure Street, where the trees fell. People down there are just wondering when the school department is going to get in and repair those fences. And the other thing that they're asking, as recently again as today, when are they going to clean up all the wood chips and other debris in that high school parking lot? Now, if you live on Eastern Avenue particularly, and I had two calls from residents down there today, it's not a good sight to be looking at, and I can't for the life of me understand why they can't get somebody in there to get those wood chips out of there and give that parking lot a good sweeping and remove any other debris that happens to be down there. So with that said, I'll lend my rhetoric, as it seems to be, week after week about this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, silver.
Calendar item number seven, motion presented by Counselor Powers that the mayor request the DPW to reinstall the memorial sign for State Representative Joe Delgrasso and his son, Joseph Delgrasso, on Malden Street.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. We all know, as a result of the recent tornado, that there were many signs, structures, et cetera, knocked down, and I hope this is an oversight on the part of the DPW. There was a sign down on Malden Street, a little park that was dedicated in memory of former State Representative Joseph Delgrasso, who served not only as a State Representative but as a city councillor and was a restaurateur in the city, operated a business down there on Broadway, and subsequently, a sign was erected for his son, who also operated a business down there, an accounting business, and for 28 years, served as a member of this city council. And I think that's something that I'd like to see happen maybe this week, if this goes to the mayor and we can get that sign, those signs put up there again. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Powers. Counselor Guanasso.
It is in Ward Three, and I have spoken to some individuals, and I also have some concern that came from family members that notified me also of this, and we've been working on it, so this should be done in a very short period of time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Guanasso. Any other counselors? On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, silver.
President, there's a late motion by Counselor Penta that the mayor used $50,000 of the insurance monies received by the city for tornado damage to hire an architect for renovations to City Hall.
Counselor Penta.
Mr. President, thank you. Mr. President, unfortunately, I wasn't here last week when you put the reconsideration in, and basically, all you're doing, you don't vote for reconsideration, shut off debate, and debate never heard anything. But I put this motion in for a reason. Watching that motion, I watched the replay of the zoning committee meeting, and the financial director spoke up here, and unfortunately, there was only a few counselors here at that time. And when he spoke, he spoke of all the disrepair from the tornado and all the work that has to be done, and anticipating extra amount of dollars for insurance, and to actually, you know, not to duplicate work with the insurance money, do it once and do it once right. You know, they're looking to put, and I thought you did a good job with it, but I mean, if it's going to be used and saved on not doing the work twice, then use it out of the insurance money. I could see some counselors where it's coming out of free cash, have a different take on it, and that's maybe why they voted against it. Because I don't see why you would vote against it if it's coming out of the insurance money. It's going to do work that may not have to be done because we're doing other type of work to refit, put in. And Counselor Riordan, at the time, brought a good point up with the McKinley School, that, you know, why duplicate things here? But, I mean, you've got to know the mayor has that in his vision, what he's going to do there. He's not moving the mayor's office over there. He's not moving the financial office over there, and those are the offices they're looking to do. But anybody that goes into mayor's office, going to be ashamed here from Revere. You really do. You have the same rug in there, stained. If you want to wait for the mayor, you're waiting on a bench in a corner, like you're in detention at school. And these are people coming in for hundreds of thousands of dollars investments. Johnny Fester's office upstairs, economic development director, has a cubicle that's outside an elevator. His conference desk has four seats around it with people marching through every 10 seconds. The mayor's office conference table is an extension of his desk. Anybody does not want to vote for it. It's a personal thing against the administration because it's an embarrassment coming into City Hall. I'll give you one example, Malden. I hate to compare our city with other cities. I was in Malden City Hall maybe about seven, eight months ago. Their foyer area, their waiting area, is bigger than the mayor's office. That building was built in 1972, probably 100 years before this one was built. They're tearing it down and building another one. And they have a council office in that building. They have offices, and Counsel Irvin Novoselfsky, last week, brought up, you know, leave this council alone, and we should have our own bathroom, maybe our own small office, and I think the mayor has that in his plans. But I think, you know, this motion, where it's coming out of the insurance money, to save money, basically, if you're going to renovate these areas, for example, the room next door, I mean, do you need that 40-foot ceiling in there? You know, maybe you fix the outset, the roof above, but you may put a drop, I don't know. But these are things that you're going to use this money for, to get an architect to come in and tell you, how are you going to save money, and how are you going to do things, energy costs and everything else? So not to spend this $50,000 would be foolish, in my opinion. And like I said, it's not coming out of any other money, coming out of the insurance money. The City Hall right now, I mean, the poor clerk, I went in their office tonight, you got a window that's, you know, a piece of plywood. It's an embarrassment. We're asking people to come into our city that spend hundreds of millions of dollars to redevelop the beach, to come to these different events, come in and speak to us, and this is what we give our people to work with? A cubicle upstairs on a mezzanine that has six other cubicles? People, I was trying to talk to Johnny Fester when people come out of the elevator, walking by like Central Station. He has to sit at a desk that, there's no privacy, but I mean, I mean, I'm basically saying stuff that everybody knows. I mean, Mayor Haas been there for, I don't know how many years ago, 12, 14, 15 years ago. I think the office is probably in the same shape that when he was in there. It's about time that, you know, we get with the times and, you know, show people that we care about the city, care about our image, that, you know, and we got a new police station. I could see now, if it was the mayor looking for a new police station, with the old one over there, probably wouldn't have got it. Would probably still be in that one. But you're right, Mr. President, I've never seen a reconsideration go down. I was offended by it myself, so don't feel bad. I asked you to put this in because I wasn't here that week, but at least I got to speak on this and ask for a vote on a motion to come out of a different funding source, and I hope this council sees fit. So let's get going. Let's get repairs to this building. Let's do it right. Let's not spend money today and then tomorrow duplicate it and cost us more and just throw it away. I'm tired of throwing taxpayers' dollars away, Mr. President. So with that being said, I ask this council to vote for this, because if you really don't, you're just showing, you're really coming for money. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Penta. Counselor Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to refresh everyone's memory. A couple of weeks ago, after the tornado, immediately after the tornado, we allowed the administration to spend money in deficiency due to the tornado. So if this has anything to do with the tornado, we've already given the approval to spend money in advance. So in my mind, this approval or, you know, having to spend this money, if it were related to the tornado, the mayor could already spend this money. We've already given him the ability to do it. This is something different. This is not related to the work that needs to be done because of a tornado. This is related to the million dollars that were talked about a couple of months ago. This is not, and I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but if we already gave the ability for the mayor to spend the money, why do we need to spend it again? And so I throw that out. I do think that Counselor Penta makes a great point about wasting taxpayer dollars, and I don't think there's anybody up here that wants to waste taxpayer's dollar. And, you know, I think if we took a little bit closer look at the budget and the amount of money that we spent in raises and new employees, maybe we could do some of this work, even vehicles, you know? When we talk about wasting taxpayer money, you know, there are priorities, and maybe we should start to reprioritize. I can't agree more that obviously City Hall is in disrepair. But we also spent some money out of our rainy day fund for a capital improvement plan because we haven't been able to get it together in terms of capital improvements. We haven't been able to get it together in terms of the DPW building, in terms of DPW vehicles. So there are a lot of things that we could talk about, and there are priorities for folks. Obviously, a million-dollar office renovation is a priority over some of those other things, and it's up to us to decide whether or not we want to go forward with that. But in terms of spending money due to the tornado or due to any damages that were done due to the tornado, we've already given the mayor the ability to spend money in deficiency, and I don't think there's a need to do it again. I don't think we need to spend, if the mayor wanted to spend $50,000 for tornado-related damages, he can do it. We don't need to do this. Thank you.
Mr. President. Report of your decision.
Thank you, Counselor. State your point, Counselor Penta.
It's apples and oranges. We gave the mayor the right to spend money, to reimburse it with the insurance money for emergency use, for emergency items, such as putting a piece of plywood on a window that's in disrepair, emergency use, to cap the roof from any rain getting more damages on the computers and stuff like that. But maybe, you're a developer, Mr. President, maybe you understand this. When you get an architect and you hire a good firm and you look to spend money, the money you usually give them, usually it comes out of the savings that they're presenting to you what to do. My point is, has the mayor done anything to this renovation of this building that I've seen to clean it up with, except for emergency use? No. But I'm saying that you've got a door in there. I came through that room earlier. There used to be a fire escape there that's boarded up and you can see right outside. Now, if you put the door back, you put a wall there, what do you do? Architect's going to tell you what to do. Probably save money, save... Like I said, this room is nice. That room isn't. The ceiling, the plaster's falling down, everything else. But do you really need a 40-foot ceiling? I mean, maybe you don't. And these are the things I'm talking about. Maybe the council misunderstood me. This money to the architect, and it's money that we, the council, appropriate and give the mayor the okay. The mayor can't go and get that money we gave him for emergency uses until he refurbishes the insurance money. The city has required, they have got some insurance money, and that's the reason I'm saying. It's not coming out of, it's coming out of money that's going to go to repairs, that next year, if we do want to renovate it, we just did that work for nothing. That's my point. You understand that, Counselor? You're a builder. If you don't understand, like I said, we can debate this so you can get to the way you want to vote, any which way you want.
Point of information, Mr. President.
It's called a needs assessment.
Point of information, Mr. President.
State your point.
We're talking about 50... That's fine. We're talking about $50,000, you know, .03 percent of the city's budget. If the mayor can't find that money within his budget this early in the fiscal year, there's a problem. There's obviously a problem. If he can't find that money this early in the fiscal year, then we're obviously running a deficiency, and there's a whole other host of issues.
Got your point. Counselor Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as a reminder about my personal objections to this whole thing, obviously, we're in a building here that is outdated and needs to be refurbished. That's beside the point. What we need to do is have a comprehensive plan to address it, given the fact that we have another municipal building about 150 yards down the street that we could possibly use for adjunct purposes. Without considering both of these buildings in the same plan, we're wasting $50,000. Why throw it away? I have nothing against Johnny Fester's cubicle or a new rug for the mayor. That's all great stuff, but let's figure it out with the consequences of the McKinley School building in mind. Just as one example, and I discussed this with the superintendent, the superintendent already uses a cadre of interpreters for people who have English as a second language. We have to do the same thing when they come to City Hall. Why not put those officers that have to do with dealing with the public in the same place and use the same people to help them out? That's just one, maybe minor, example. But if we start talking about renovating this place without thinking about renovating that place down the street, we're going to be spending another $50,000 to change our plans. Makes no sense. Why do it? That McKinley School is going to be empty by next June. It's offline in the school department as of when we accept the new building at the Hill School. So now, now spend your $50,000 and have someone tell you what could better be done at the McKinley School than in this building here. Make this a better building than it ever could be by thinking of this building alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Riordan. Counselor Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President.
view of, or our personal feelings toward the administration. That, on my part, that could be, that's absolutely a false impression of me. When I make a vote, my vote is based on the interest of the people of this city and it's, and the city itself. My vote has nothing to do and does not reflect the administration, and I just want to set that clear.
Well, Mr. President, I didn't address that since you used my name. I didn't use any councillor's names. I did not use any councillor's names. All I basically said was, people have different reasons for voting for things, but if you vote on this and it's merits. I used to be a developer, I worked for developer for 15 years, and I know how to, and you get architects, engineers and stuff like that, they're there for a reason. So maybe, you know, there's people there that don't have the experience, okay? I may have to say it a different way, that maybe that's why, I don't know. But to not to spend this, and councillor Riordan, there's apples, oranges and peaches with the school, because we already decided what, basically, the school department's getting a third of it. I believe we, hopefully, can rent out a third of it and then move out the building department and a couple, not the financial director.
Point of information, I don't remember voting on anything like that.
Oh, I did. That was at a meeting, we discussed it. And the school department spent $200,000 to pay for the bond money. But, Mr. President, we're not moving, the renovations that you're doing is for the mayor's office, it's nothing to do with the McKinley School. And we're into grapes now talking about that. So, I mean, like I said, you can, you can use it, you want it on the debate.
We can go on about this all night. What we're talking about is a $50,000 needs assessment for some of the renovations of the City Hall, not of million-dollar renovation cost, what a needs assessment would determine would be needed. That's what the 50 grand is for.
And it will come out of the insurance money.
Your motions ask for it to come out of the insurance money. Councillor Powers. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I realize fully that, you know, there are probably many improvements that could be made in the mayor's office and city clerk's office and many of the offices throughout the city. And we all know that they cost money. You know, I'm not against any administration. As a matter of fact, I supported Dan Rizzo when he ran for mayor, and my family did too. So I want to, without mentioning any names, clarify that right away. However, the mayor's office in this city for close to five decades served Mayor Einstein, Mayor Calulla, Mayor Haas, and Mayor Ambrosino. And it was done effectively and efficiently. Do I think we need to make some repairs and improvements? I certainly do. Would I like to see that office look better when people come into this City Hall positively? But I think before we go spending $50,000, we ought to be sure that we're going to have that million dollars coming in to make those improvements. You know, $50,000 may not seem like a lot of money, but to the taxpayers in this city, when you take $50,000, you can do a lot of trenches, you can do a lot of potholes and a lot of catch basins. So for me to vote for $50,000 just for a needs assessment, I certainly, I certainly couldn't do it. And the other thing you have to remember, we're getting insurance money, no question about it, and I understand on each building that was damaged, and my understanding is there were eight of them, we're going to pay $10,000 per building as a deductible. So that's another $80,000 we're going to need. So I don't know where the $50,000 is even going to come from out of the insurance money. Some things aren't probably even going to be covered with insurance. So let's worry about the $80,000, making that up so we can repair the actual damage to the buildings, and then let's, we'll look at that $50,000 later. Let's look at the $50,000 maybe after November, when the residents of this Commonwealth say, and the gaming commission says you're going to have casino gambling, and the residents of this Commonwealth say you're going to have casino gambling, then there's a lot of things we can do. We can repair that garage down at the DPW, find them a better place. We can remodel some of these offices that need it. We can do a lot of our roadways and our sidewalks and our streets, beef up our police and fire department, but let's wait and see where the money's coming from. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor Powers. Councillor Gennaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to try not to be repetitive because I believe a lot of my colleagues have hit a lot of the major points in this issue. But the issue that I have with this, first of all, some things that I want to clarify, I think the mic's on down there. That's all right, thank you. This is nothing personal, this has nothing to do with personal, because it doesn't only affect the mayor's office, it infects all of our city employees. And I think that every single person on this council agrees that we have nothing but the utmost respect for everyone that works in this building, because they do things to help us help the residents every single day of the week. So we need to look at all of our options before we determine anything that needs to be done in this building. And I think it is premature until we find out what's going on with the McKinley School, not to mention, we have a ton of land behind City Hall once we knock down that police station, which is a giant hazard. We have City Hall offices right now in a garage outside the police station. It's completely not functional. And the safety of our employees is what should, our number one priority should be, you know, it's a matter of function, not cosmetics in City Hall, because the reality of it is, we don't have the money to be worried about if we have a pretty entrance and a pretty foyer, because we don't have that in our budget, we don't have that luxury. We are a functioning budget, we have money to be used on things that are only for functions. We have a fire station that's closed right now, and we have a DPW that has tarps over the roof when it rains so their computers don't get wet. So I think that we need to assess all of the department heads, not only the ones that are in City Hall, but throughout the city, because I think we have a lot of other issues that need to be addressed. And that was my personal feeling with this. It was nothing personal, and I don't ever want that to be the assumption. It was just that I feel as if there are other priorities for public safety and for the safety of our employees that need to be recognized before we worry about the cosmetics of our buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gennaro. Councillor Guanasso.
Mr. President, it appears to me that this is, number one, is not a late motion. This is a very controversial motion, and it should never be considered in late fashion. I honestly believe that this should be sent to the Ways and Means Committee, whereupon we can get intelligent answers by asking the financial director, Giorgio Zoni, come before us again, and Zona the mayor, or any staff member that would have substance to the conversation. It seems beyond a reasonable doubt, there's a considerable amount of councillors against this particular proposal. So maybe, given the light of what's going to happen with this $50,000, rather than just say it's for architectural concerns and means, the intelligent may, would be to put it before the proper board, it wouldn't be the Subcommittee of Ways and Means, and having all the necessary players involved attend that meeting. But in my opinion, this is not a late motion, should never be considered a late motion. And I think I offer this out as a substitute to the late motion to go as a way to have this submitted to Ways and Means. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, I appreciate that, councillor, but any motion can be sent to any committee at any time, so I think...
I understand that, but to the maker, I would wish that in the future, such a controversial...
And I am inclined, I am inclined to send it to Ways and Means, but, I mean, I think it's an appropriate motion, and we'll send, we'll talk about it in a minute.
Okay, because there's some people sitting here saying, well, where do we know where the money's coming from? What are we doing?
Well, that's, that's perfect, I agree.
Let's resolve the questions, but let's do it in the proper fashion.
Thank you, councillor.
Mr. President. Councillor Haas.
I have no problem with that, Senator.
Okay, councillor Haas.
First of all, Mr. President, I believe the magnitude of this motion, very controversial, everyone knew it, okay? And I believe it should not have been entered as a late communication. Late communication is for simple things, potholes, you know, et cetera. But now on the issue here, $50,000 may seem like a minute amount of money, but we're looking at what will we receive from the insurance money coming in? We have no clue. We have no clue, all right? So you want to couple this with that, to use that. I would basically say, you know, hold off until you get the whole reimbursement from the insurance company, and then analyze it at that point in time. Right now, you know, you've got like a DPW that's falling apart, literally falling apart. How can you talk about the mayor's office and another office? I think we have to wait. We've been hearing this, a new office for the mayor for the last year and a half, all right? And now all of a sudden, it's coming up for review. I'd like to find out, number one, what do you think this overall expenditure would be as far as the cost of this relocation, and move forward. This way here, we're just shooting in the dark.
Well, let me, if I might, councillor, I disagree with your premise that this late motion shouldn't have been let in as late, but if we're going to go back to protocol here, tonight's probably not the night, okay? Bottom line is that without a needs assessment, you can't know where you're going in a renovation, because you, that's how it works. You set up, just like when we built the police station, they meet for months with all the department heads, the needs of each department, and that's how you do a needs assessment in a building project. And then you determine, once you've decided what your needs assessment is, you decide the square footage cost for each of those particulars, individual build outs. So that's where we're at with this, and it's going to Ways and Means. I agree it was controversial, I don't agree it wasn't, shouldn't have been allowed as a late motion. I do agree that we're changing protocol left and right up here, and for my first time in 15 years, I saw a reconsideration denied. You know, not the, not the motion part of it, but the, to reconsider is normally a standard procedure. You let the council reconsider, then you shoot it down.
Move the previous question, Mr. President.
Okay. Ways and Means. Ways and Means. Oh, oh, I'm not allowed, everybody else went on a tirade. Ways and Means.
I think you have to...
Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned until September 15.